Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the special meeting of the Conservation Commission and Inland Wetlands and Water Course Agency for Wednesday, May 28th to order. We have a dinner in the forum, and I'd like Sue, if you could be seated for Joe. Approve of the minutes? Has anyone, have any changes or corrections to the minutes for the May 20th meeting? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Are we in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. New applications for receipt. I see we have none. I have a hearing. We have none. The agent actions, none. And old commission business, nuns. Which takes us to the main event for tonight. The application CC number 25-02 of McLean Affiliates, Inc., an applicant and owner for a wetland permit to construct 52 new residential units at existing McLean Retirement Community with associated improvements in the wetland soils up in review area at 75 Great Pond. Section map E08, block 147, lot 001, Simms. Right. So, we pick up where we left off with the discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, maybe, maybe, um, maybe, maybe the town attorney has some, any additional guidance.
That would be very good.
Yes, just to review where we left off.
You have, uh, two matters in front of you. First is the application, the underlying application for a permit under the regulations. The second is the intervention petition, which you accepted and you heard testimony and evidence on. The recommended approach to that is to deal with the intervention petition first, because depending on how you deal with that, it may, how you decide that, it may impact how you deal with the application. For the petition, you can approve or deny the petition. And as we talked about last time, the standard is the applicant, the petitioner's burden to prove that the, the proposed activity is reasonably likely to unreasonably pollute the air, water, and natural resources of the state. Now, when you're considering that petition, you must consider specifically what the petition claims. The actual language, the allegations in the actual petition. And you must do that with a consideration of what within that petition is within your jurisdiction as an inland wetlands agency. The petition does not expand your jurisdiction, meaning that if the allegation in the petition is outside of your jurisdiction, then you cannot consider it. And I think you did a good job of working through that last time. So that's the first order of business. Go through each of the allegations and make a determination, A, whether it's, if it's within your jurisdiction. Secondly, if yes, uh, the interveners, petitioners meet their burden of proving that the alleged activity will unreasonably, reasonably likely to unreasonably pollute the water and natural resources of the state. There was a question last time, well, what is unreasonable? And how do we measure that? Well, you have to look at, it can't be mere speculation. It has to be based on expert testimony and documents submitted by experts in the area. For instance, if you're dealing with water quality, you need to have heard testimony from a bona fide water quality expert that in his or her opinion, this activity will unreasonably pollute the air, the water. It's unreasonable. Now, the question is, what's unreasonable? You asked that question. And looking into this further in the intervening weeks, you have to look at whether or not the proposal by the applicant meets state standards for the given parameter you're looking at. Is there a state regulation? Is the DEP published guidance? Does it meet the standard of care? Yes or no? Is it within or outside of those standards? And that's a determination you'll have to make, because you heard testimony from the petitioner's expert, yes, it does. You heard testimony from the applicant's expert, no, it doesn't, and here's why. It's your job to make a determination of which you agree or wait to. You also heard from the town engineer, and you've also heard from the town planner on these issues. So you are, the judges sitting there weighing the evidence and coming to conclusions, given the standard, and given the burden of proof. The burden of proof is very important here. It's their burden, the petitioner's burden, to prove through their expert testimony that their allegations are reasonably likely to unreasonably pollute.
Now, when you say pollute, would that also be altering the physical characteristics of the?
You don't know the physical characteristics?
It does say in, um, it does say in D6, what is? Bottom page. It's the last words on the bottom of the page from the memo from George. Like the physical characteristics of such wetland or water course. I don't know if you have this memo from? It was from you, from you, Bob. Yeah. Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, I have that.
It's, uh?
I'm looking at it.
Yeah, the very last line.
On what page?
It's just the memo. The, um, one page one memo.
It's today's, today's.
I'm sorry.
Email.
So what, what you have in front of you is simply the state statute? Or it is the state statute?
Yes.
So it does say the physical characteristics of the wetland? And water course.
He says it's 2D.
Yeah, 2D.
2D.
That's talking about the outside of the, of the well, I think.
The proposed activity will likely impact the physical characteristics of the wetland or water.
But this, and this is just, this section is, is, comes out of statute. This isn't necessarily directed for, for the intervener guidance.
No, this, this is how you would weigh the application against your regulations.
I think it's just saying that. If it's not within the wetland or water course, then it's not within our jurisdiction.
Regulated area.
Yeah.
Within a regulated area.
But the, um, yeah, but, but I'm, I'm getting to the point, the pollution, um, pollution. If you de-water a wetland, that would be a profound impact on the wetland. It's not a pollution, but it's a de-watering.
That is impacting the physical characteristics.
Yes.
Well, de-watering would have an impact on the physical characteristics.
So it's, it's the, it's the change of the physical characteristics of the wetland to its detriment and pollutants.
Do you have testimony, expert testimony, that the activity will in fact de-water the regulated area? You would have to consider the evidence you've heard. And getting back to the standards, you would have to find that there was specific evidence of adverse impact on environmental resources, that's the petition, based on the evidence you heard from the experts.
Good, I just wanted to clarify that. It wasn't just, just the pollution, it's the?
And then how does, how does that decision affect what the, the next step? For the, for the, the second step that you were talking about, in terms of the decision on the applicant?
Well, if you were to find that the applicant, the petitioner met their burden of proof, then you would have to consider whether or not the applicant has presented reasonable and prudent alternatives to minimize that adverse impact.
So this was a question I had last time, and I'm not sure I understood the final answer. If there was no, uh, petitioner, we would still have the responsibility deciding whether the applicant had met the proof of showing that their plans did not, were not going to have a significant impact on the physical characteristics of the wetlands. So, I see a situation where, I see a potential for a situation where the, the interveners have not met their burden, but the applicant by itself has not met their burden either. And then the application would be incomplete. Is that a, is that a correct interpretation?
That could, there's no inconsistency with that finding if you were to make it. Now, if you find that, then under the statute which we shared with you today, it's, the commission must, um, I want to use the language in the, propose on the record in writing the types of alternatives which the applicant may investigate. You'd have to say, didn't, you know, didn't meet the standards of the regulations, didn't present reasonable and prudent alternatives on this particular issue, and, um, we, the commission, propose that they do the following. And you've talked about that. You've talked about clustering, reducing impact on the wetland area by reducing the footprint of the disrupt, disturbance in the area.
And, and others. So there is, so, so I just want to be clear, because the way you had outlined it before was, it was one line of logic where, um, you had to either find, you know, see if the interveners had met their burden of proof. And then, and then it kind of shifted towards, if that was a no, then there's still, there wasn't a responsibility in the applicant to meet, to meet their burden. And I, I guess what I'm hearing you say is that there is another option, which is, we could find that the applicant has not met their burden for other reasons.
The applicant bears the burden. Okay. To meet the, meet the standard under the regulations.
Okay. Yeah, Charles, those, those, those regulations come from, from your inland wetland regulations, section 10 dot 2, criteria for decision, where it talks about environmental impact, purpose of activity, loss of wetland or water core. I mean, so those A, you know, essentially A through G. So those come right out of your standards, which?
Which come out of the statute.
Which come out of the statute. Yeah, so, so yes.
Yeah, and which makes a lot, which, which makes a lot of sense to me, but it was, that was sort of hidden in the discussion we had last time. So, I'm fine with that. Thank you. Thank you for the clarifications.
We can have a discussion on, um, the intervenor's petition to approve, uh, our decision to approve or deny. I, I did not, I mean, I, I, as far as I was concerned, the, um, the plan that was submitted did not, I mean, it met the state standards for pollutant control. Most of the pollutants are going to be adhered onto this sediment, and that's going to be captured from the Porbay. I'm not as worried about that. But I am concerned about the, and the intervener did bring up, that the, um, the detention basins are actually on the lower end of Wetland 8. Now, they're going to be fed with drainage from further upstream. But all the site now is being directed to, to the end of Wetland 8. I am concerned about the, um, flow into Wetland 8, the hydrology into Wetland 8. That's where my concerns are.
And so it's a common, I think that's the, that's a common concern that we've had. So, but it seems to me that the question before us is, as they stated, is, for the intervenors, have they met a burden of proof? And, and I'll just tell you, on my end, this is where I was last time. They have, they have not, because they have not been able to show specifically that there would be damage. Likewise, the applicant hasn't specifically said that there won't be any damage. So, my operation, this is what I'm thinking right now, unless somebody, you know, has a different, you know, wants, can talk me out of this, is that, it's that the interveners have not met their burden. But that, that doesn't mean that the burden shifts off of the applicant.
I would say that the applicant almost pointed out for us that this is going to be the case.
Oh, you mean intervener?
No. The applicant themselves. The intervener, I don't think really participates.
So, so tell me a little bit more, is it, when you say that, well, this would be the case? Tell me a little bit more what you mean by that.
Um, so, um, Wetland 8 is going to not be fed the way it is today.
Okay.
And I feel that the intervener did not prove that. However, from the documents given by the applicant of how, the direction of the water and how it would go, it kind of proves to us that our assumptions are correct.
And, and then, and then the distinction goes back to, maybe that's the best you could do, but that hasn't been, you know, discussed. I mean, that, that's my thing.
Just an extension of, of that is that a lot of the conversation and information that we learned about the hydrology and the change of the water and the reduction of the flow to Wetland 8, we learned that information because of the intervenors. And, uh, it's very possible that we would have unveiled that ourselves without the intervenors, but the interveners were the ones that drew it out. So, for me, it was a little unclear last time, but I think more clear to me now that because of them, that information came forward. And so they did meet a burden of showing us something.
Oh, without a doubt. I mean, it, it was defined as to, it was defined last time as a very binary. It's either good or, it's either did or didn't. And, and I would absolutely claim that the interveners have been critical to, to understanding the problem and helping to improve, you know, with conjunction with the applicant, to improving the system that we have before us. But I, but I think that the way it's structured, the decision part, is have they demonstrated? Can you point to the evidence that says this will fail? They can't.
Right. But neither can the applicants.
And, and I 100% believe that.
But that's a diff, that's, that's, that's quite, that's part two.
Right, yeah, right.
Yeah, right.
But, but the difference is, is that, is that, at least in my understanding, is before when it was laid out, it was like, okay, if you, if you said that the interveners had not met it, that, that automatically meant that the applicant didn't have to prove that they met their stuff. And, and that's not the case, as we just talked about.
Well, you know, looking at the intervener application, there are, I mean, it's three pages, and they get very specific about certain things, including habitats and things like that, but that's not us. That's not wetlands. We can't really think about that. But they do say, uh, "The proposed development poses a memory as though likely to pollute the parent or storing the water for other natural resources of the state, including wetlands, and related ecosystems of plants and wild, including but not limited to." That's where, I mean, have they, have the applicant, I mean, it's right there on, are they impairing? Is the development going to impair the wetlands? Impair the well, is basically, it's, you know, there's a lot of words in there, but that's?
You're looking at which number five?
Number five. Like the second sentence, the second line.
And, and I guess when I was looking at number five, and I was looking at all these, I couldn't point to the evidence that said it would. This is all, this, this is, this is all a reasonable discussion, and brought out a lot of the context about the hydrology, construction, and the science techniques around it. And there's been ways to mitigate that, and the applicant's taken some of them. But, one of the things that I, as, as representing, you know, sort of the broader community, we have to make sure, I think, that we can step and say, yeah, we've looked at all these things, and to our, you know, in the record, these have been answered to the, to a reasonable level all the way through. And I just don't see that the, um, that the interveners at this point in time, I can't point to a specific thing that says they've proved this. That's why I don't think.
Like on, on page five of Report A, this is what it said, this is?
This is the problem. And, and of course, one of the issues was, is the applicant hadn't answered as to why that wasn't.
Correct.
And, and so that, that, that's why I'm just, where I am right now, it's, I don't think they've met that burden.
So what is the significance of, if we go ahead with the, um, either denying or approving the intervener's status? We, we still go back to the permitting process that we have? Is there any consequence to approving or denying the intervener's status?
Uh, well, the interveners would have the right of appeal. To deny the petition, they would have the right of appeal. But, and you'd have to find that they did not identify, um, specific evidence of specific harm. If, if you deny the petition, then you move to the application. And then you measure whether or not the applicant met its burden under the regulations. It's, it's two different proceedings, really, with two different standards.
What would be the procedure if we denied both?
You would take up the petition first. Take action on the petition, deliberate what you've been doing. Take action on the petition. And if you were to deny the petition, then you would take up the application, deliberate on that, and take an action you feel is appropriate, based on the evidence you heard, measuring the application against your regulations, not against the standard under 22A19.
It's, you know, it's, um, again, as Charles stated, the, the involvement of the petition, of the interveners has been invaluable in this process. Good discussion. Unfortunately, the intervener is not allowed to go on to do studies on-site, so, you know, it's, it's like, how can you prove when you can't do anything on-site? So, there's?
One more thing on the, on the application. If you find they didn't meet their burden under the regulations and did not present reasonable and prudent alternatives, and there's a definition of reasonable and prudent alternatives, then, again, you must identify what you would consider reasonable alternatives to be, to inform them of why you felt it was lacking.
And we, and we would have to have that discussion before we did the approval or the denial of the, of the system, so we could actually point to that.
All right, do we feel comfortable in handling, um, doing the first part? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'd make a motion that we, um, deny that the, uh, interveners have met their burden of proof.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All right. That was, yes or no? Do we have a no?
I'll say no.
Okay. All right. So now we'll go on to the, the motion for that. Or we'll go on to the discussion of the, um, permit. And I want to thank, first off, I want to thank the interveners for their incredible contribution.
Which is still on the public record.
Yes. Do we need to address the interveners for, what they would have to do for appeal?
No, you don't have to.
Only on the application?
The application is statutory provision we're reciting applies to the application, not the petition.
When I was looking this afternoon over this, over the application, there were, the revised drainage report that I looked at, there were some things that, I don't know why I didn't catch it before, and I don't think it's been discussed, but on page two, this is the beginning of their, their presentation. It says the parcel size total is 110.7 acres for the entire. Existing impervious area is 10.91 acres. And remember, there's that other part of the application to do the, straighten the road out in the beginning. So the existing impervious area is 10.91, and now the proposed is 18.16. So that's an increase of impervious area, 7.25 acres. And that's only going to come from this development. So you went from, they're going to cut 16 acres of trees and take five acres of the meadow. So that 21 acres, 30%, 30% of it, seven acres, is going to be impervious. That's, that's kind of a big impact to that area. And then, a little bit later, on page? They talk about the hydrologic analysis. And they have analysis points A, B, C, D, and E. They said point C is going to be folded into point D. So, we're only talking about four. That's on page four. The only place that shows those appear on a map, they, they say about what it is. They say the point A represents the wetland located in the eastern portion of the site. Point B represents the golf course located in the southeast, southeast of the site. Point D represents Hop Brook. And point E represents the wetland located in northern portion of the site. On page 370 and 371, so the last two pages, they show where those are. Point A is behind a house on Great Pond Road, hundreds of yards from where we are. Point B is on the golf course behind the Burkhalter Building. Again, this is not going to have any impact on that. Point D is Hop Brook, that's there. And point E is in the eastern wetlands, and that's right next to Great Pond Road. So of all these points that they talk about, only one actually has any type of bearing. And I find it kind of hard to understand why they didn't take any analysis points in the area of question. And when they talk about they dug test pits, that's an appendix E, and they talk about test pits, but they never show exactly where they are.
But there are some maps with the test pits in them. These are the test pits, and they do have numbers, like there's test pit 24.
Were they parked, were they, was that, is it taken from this?
It was in the revised drainage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was looking for that, and I couldn't find it.
Yeah, it was, it was a confused, it's a confusing application, especially when you have to do it on, on, rather than having the big sheets which you just have, and you're just doing it on this, on the computer screen, but they do have them.
Yeah, I think, depending on, um, yeah, that's, that's a revised one. That's, that's revised.
This is a revised, yeah, yeah.
And they do have the depths.
Yeah, I saw the depths and all that, but it didn't, I was trying to find that, and I, I couldn't find it.
No, they're, it's, there's so much going on in the map, it's, it is, it is hard to view, especially on a, you know, zoom in, and then you lose context of where everything is. But that's, that's, you know, neither here nor there.
What other issues?
No, those are the big things that I just saw today. Other than the fact that all this impervious area is all going to drain into that basin, and it's going to discharge below Wetland 8, so you're going to de-water all of Wetland 8. There's nothing going to be going in. There will be some, but?
I think that's the biggest concern. I mean, it's a very intense development, and because of that, there's, there's a high reliance on engineered solutions to get the water off the streets, and for safety reasons, understandably. But it does mean that, and, you know, I was looking at the map and trying to figure, well, where else would you put the detention basis? I'm not sure. But downhill of the wetlands is not going to be beneficial to the wetland at all.
I thought that same thing, but I don't know how you could put it some, if you put it upstream.
You don't get the drainage from the site.
Well, you get the, well, even if you sort of graded that you did, I don't see how you could say, oh, this will have a net zero effect. You're just basically saying, I hope, I hope it works, but there's no way to prove it.
It'll be a net zero effect on the, the discharge point, you know, from, you know, that area of the? It'll be a net zero effect on the, the discharge point, you know, from, you know, that area of the, of the, uh, the site. But it, it doesn't get it to the wetland.
Correct.
It gets it to Hopbrook, but it doesn't get it to.
Well, but, but not the same way.
No.
It's a point load, I suppose, the dispersed load.
Yeah, I mean, it still goes into the ground there, and some of it will go across.
And then there could also be impact for people's wells that live around there. Now, you're taking the water and you're putting it in a point, as opposed to.
Uh, I don't, I don't think the wells are within our, within our, within our.
Given, given it's, it's draining toward, you know, the, the topo lines show it's draining towards Wetland Eight. You know, it's not, it's not, I don't think it's an off-site issue. It's just, it's just an awful lot of program for the, for the, the, for the area. A lot of impervious surface, which is collecting, you know, they're collecting that water, the, the mass majority from the impervious surfaces. I mean, heading it to the detention basin, which, you know, on another site might work better, but it, you know, it's a, it's just, we're here to regulate the wetland. And I don't think it's working.
Well, the, so Marty, I thought a lot about the conversation at the last meeting, and when you were, and, and at least in my mind, well, a lot of this boils down to is that a lot of the best practices and, and recommendations are for an average situation. There's very little this average about this. It's a large clear cut, larger than is recommended. Uh, it's not just a clear cut, there's a re, uh, you know, redistribution of the soils over the, over the system. Things that, that, that they, that the applicant could easily manage, they did. They, they proved the, the crossings well. But the things that were harder to quantify, um, they, you know, they, they didn't come back with that kind of sort of analysis, because this isn't an average system. And that's where I feel that the, that they just haven't met the burden. I think that they can. Um, I, I, and, um, but I just don't think it's been done in this, in this, in, in the current record.
If they maximize the number of units that can go in. And, and they, you know, if, if this was a different site of that wetland where they're, it, it would work, but I don't, it don't.
But, but.
This site, it doesn't work.
But, but even, even with the final design as is, they probably could, they probably could issue the proof that this would work if, in terms of how they might do the construction phase. It's, it's, you know, there hasn't been enough reasonable alternatives in how you actually end up with this in the, in the, in the construction. And I think that, if that was addressed, um, with a little bit more detail, you could, you could do it. But the, the basic idea of concentrating everything in the two loads, de-watering that system, it could work. It might not, but it's a.
Uh, I don't know how it would work, it's downhill from the rest of the wetland. Water doesn't flow uphill.
And, and I don't, in this type of configuration, with this big loop with all these units crossing the wetlands. I don't see how you could make the plan better. Because if you put the, the basins uphill.
They're in the wetlands.
They're in the wetlands, you take out some units and put it up there, but.
If.
But there's no way to, to say that if you drained it, you have the detention basins going in some other manner. It, would it be the same as what the wetlands are getting now? Who knows?
Well, so I guess in my thinking was that there was, that there would be a way to phase the construction in a manner so that you, we could absolutely talk about what's really happening to these soils.
Well, I don't, I, I think we have to look at the after construction. Um, and after this is all done, the water's gonna be flowing down to the two detention basins at the bottom of, uh, of, uh, wetland hydrology. I mean, it's downhill from the.
Well, it, it depends on how much the, the other surfaces are perking and how well that works.
I mean, when you look at, when you look at the picture, an awful lot of it's impervious. A lot of it's impervious, a lot of it's being collected, it's being, you know, the, the lawn's good, the, the, the meadow plantings are good. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of things they've done very nicely on this plan, but it, it still boils down to this tough site. Get, and the water is being drained away from the wetland.
Yeah, by their own plan, they have twenty-one acres they're developing on, and a third of that is impervious.
Definitely sight constriction to restrictions here, but, you know, our, our, our regulatory authority is to maintain the wetlands. And, and there's no way that, that water will get to.
Our, our.
Anything other than there.
Yeah.
It, it's to maintain the wetlands and to show that there is no other alternative that is le- less damaging than this system.
Yeah.
There could be, if they cut it here, not add anything over there. And then you wouldn't have a basin here, all that would flow into Wetland Eight.
Yeah, I, I'm just not convinced, there's not another, um, I mean, we haven't seen any other configurations. They have been good about pulling things out of the wetland, um, you know, that was, that was appreciated. But, is, is.
Like what they did with the bridges?
The bridges, that was great, um, you know, the planting's excellent, um, there's, there's a, you know, there's a lot to commend. You know, what they've done, it's just that hy- the hydrology doesn't work. I think it just boils down to that, it's just, um.
For this site.
For this site, um, for that, for that configuration of, um, units. I don't think it, it, you can't make water flow uphill.
Well, I, I still think there's an initial assumption, the way that the base has been sized, they've been sized as if all the water is actually gonna end up in the basins, they've been taking care of the volume calculations. But because they're piping things around with drip, with, with perforated, um, pipes. And if it would, if it were to park, like they think it's going to, because all the soil is good and it's not gonna damage as much. You could actually end up, you know, repopulating that, 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 that wetland to some degree.
Yeah, but we don't know how much.
You absolutely don't know how much. But, but the thing is.
It's always the last minute.
Well, a lot of my, a lot of my issues was, you know, they had a phase one, phase two, but if the phase two was split up into things and you could see how that was working, you could then show whether anything else had to change, before you went and did everything else. But that, that would have been the, that was the alternative that we asked about before the, the end, and what, before the, uh, end of closing, uh, comments. It wasn't really addressed.
Instead, they could, this is the best way to do it.
But that was coming from a place of, they wanna maximize how many units to put there.
Right. But we can't vote on maybe, or expect, maybe if they modify.
What I'm saying is, as is, I don't.
There's not a lot of, um, development, um, technique here, I mean, it's clustering. But from a hydrologic point of view, you know, concentrating on getting that water back into wetland. It's mostly concentrating that water to get it safely into Hopbrook, which it does. It's just not getting it into the wetland that we're regulating.
Is it safely going back to Hopbrook?
According to state standards.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that's been proven.
Yeah, also that, we don't know.
Cause, because, because it is, because you are going to a point, uh, a point source, and then it's not distributed well. And that has not been, that, that has not been discussed in detail.
Well, we had a lot of discussion whether it's an infiltration detention basin, but, you know, the, the applicant has told us it's an infiltration detention basin. So it's gonna, it's gonna slow down the water that will get into Hopbrook, so that reduces flooding. That's the goal, and then infiltration, it would get into the groundwater, which would also, um, flatten the hydrological curve.
That water and having it come to one point and flowing it out, just, it's not one, I mean, coming from the detention basin and moving out.
Yeah, but it's, there, there are, you know, there, the two level spreaders, if the storm is big enough, it would get out. Otherwise, it's gonna.
So if a storm happens, what should we expect? We didn't get that answer.
We've got calculations for it.
Yeah, it was based on a twenty-five year storm, right?
But I still, still think, you know, looking at the map, the, the, um, all of, all of the.
Yeah.
You know, there, I mean, there'll be some this way, some that way, but most of it's on the lower end of the. And there is, I mean, there is flow coming from, from that section. But, I mean, the reason there's a wetland there is because there's not a lot of surface, um, deposits, superficial deposits on top. I mean, the, the detention basin is only a few feet till the glacial till, which we did hear testimony that the glacial till has better characteristics than what we would usually take for glacial till. So there will be the, the groundwater, but the, the lines are, you know, still down, not, not towards the wetland as much, there's some, but not, not a lot.
So I, I'll.
Sparks and published.
I'll say that I'm not as, I'm not as hard over that I don't think that this could work. Um, you know, that, that just because of the elevations, et cetera. I just don't think that, that it's been shown that all the alternatives have been addressed properly. So, so I, I do think that from this, you could, you could get to something that would, that would work. But again, you'd have to, you'd have to sort of prove that you've, you've addressed all these different issues at a, at a level of detail that they haven't attacked yet. I'm not sure if that changes the discussion, but I'm not, I don't think it's as, I don't think it's as, as, as impossible for this, for the system.
We have to vote one way or the other.
Well, no, I, I think, I think there's a difference, there's a difference in that. The reason I'm saying that is that if we vote to deny or that's incomplete, we have to provide the, the actual things that we would want to see in order to, in order, for the reason, for that reason of the vote. So these are the three or four things. And I was just saying that, that I believe you could, you could list the kinds of things you like to see them address in order to get, to, just to, to make something like this work. Uh, and if they showed those things, then I would think that would.
Well, it might, might require a different configuration.
A different configuration is, is one option.
Yeah. Um, and that's, you know, it, it's, I can understand, if this is their site, they would like to develop it. But it's, um, much of this particular configuration, how, you know, however appealing it may be, from other reasons. It's not a particular, I don't think it's a particularly effective one for maintaining that one.
If this was on a different piece of property, that, I think that's works any day of the week, but whether it's located, it's like. From pegging a square hole.
So. Is there anything else anyone would like to bring up?
May, maybe we should list.
Okay, well, we do have. I do wanna just remind you of, of, of one thing, um, the town attorney and I both do. So you did request draft motions, I can see you've got those in front of you. You have two draft motions, one, of course, was, was complete approval, the other was a, a complete denial. You also have the draft motion that follows your lead, which essentially rejected the intervenor petition. But, but also, um, goes along with, with, with this line of, of, of thinking towards the application. So I can hand that, so it's essentially a combination of what you're saying. So I'm gonna pass it to you right now.
The language.
No, no.
It's a different one.
It, it is, it, it is. Cause you, you requested motions for approval and denial.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So just go ahead and read it, uh, this is from the town attorney.
Thank you.
Myself, yeah. Obviously, it's in draft one, you can revise, extend, reject.
There's no distinction, is there a distinction between denies and incomplete? The applicant is incomplete, the application is incomplete?
No, I, I prefer you not to use the word incomplete. Incomplete really means, in your mind, they have not presented enough reasonable and prudent alternatives to have it approved.
Failed to meet the submission standard. Part of their application failed to meet the submission standard for the application.
For this, for the application submission, not for the discussion.
When you, when you took in the application, you determined it to be a complete application. So what you're really saying is, after hearing all the testimony of the experts and others, you have found, you find that there did not present alternatives that has less impact on the regulated area that you've been discussing. You believe there are alternatives that could be proposed.
But did that, but that, I'll make clear that. That requires a denial of the application, not a statement that the application is incomplete, cause they did not put that forward.
It would be a denial of the application for the following reasons. And then you would identify those alternatives. Statute says, shall propose on the record in writing the types of alternatives which the applicant may investigate. And you give direction to the applicant. You choose to deny it based on what you've been discussing, you're obligated to give direction to the applicant on what alternatives you wish to have proposed.
Well, yes, that, yeah, that goes with the last, the last few sentences indeed.
Right, right, but I, I guess I was, I was trying to get through in my head that, a distinction. Cause there was a time when we were talking about, um, I think the intervenor brought this up, that, um, that there was a distinction between denying it, denying an application and considering it incomplete, because the evidence had not been submitted. But you're stating right now that there is no distinction between, the only time that you ever say something is incomplete is when you looked at the application coming in, and it had failed right up front to be missing a, a piece of it. Like they just didn't, they just didn't have any of this stuff, that's the only time you'd ever use the incomplete.
I think that's correct.
Yeah, I could do. Like if the storm, if the drainage report was missing.
There was no drainage report.
There was no drainage report, and we can say it's incomplete, go do it.
Didn't identify the owners of property.
Yeah, anything, okay.
So, so, so.
Fashionably.
Like in our case, this, so we would just approve or deny, but in our denial, we can say that part of the reason is because the submission was not to the standard.
Correct.
Right, but there was, there was a, there was a fairly, there was a fairly detailed jurisdictional question about this in the intervenors in the beginning. And, um, and they basically, on their side, they went through a logic which said, you know, this is why you shouldn't approve it, you know, here's all the reasons. And, but if you, you know, so, but if you don't think that these happen, then they, they, it could, it needs to be incomplete for a couple of pieces. Now, it could have been that the reason, I have to go back and look at it, the reason that they were going after incomplete is cause they thought it was missing a, um, some, some conservation related issues that are outside of jurisdiction. But I would, I would claim that a piece of that, about the, 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 uh, the floor and fire, you know, survey within the wetlands and going down to the river in that one drainage area was not well characterized, and that is part of a complete application.
Correct, that, that's, in addition, the submission of the required biological processes unsatisfactory and failed to meet this, the submission standard.
Right, 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 but that, that goes back to the denial. So I, I guess I'm, you know, at least from your perspective, and, and I think I'd have to go back and read this to, to make clear in my head. It's still, as a practical issue, it doesn't matter whether we found it was incomplete or denied at this point. It would be the same net effect on the applicant and, and has the same. It would be the same net effect on the applicant and, and has the same, um, effect on what they would do going after this finding.
I, I, I think so. From what I'm hearing, your direction is pretty clear as to what you find um, deficiency to be in terms of the proving im- negative impact on the wetland. You, you just, what I'm hearing is, you think there's a better way to do it that won't have adverse, potential adverse impact on wetland area eight, is what I'm hearing.
Or, or that they could come back with analysis that shows that there isn't a difference, but that was not addressed. I, I guess the thing, the other thing I wanna make sure of is, is that be- because the difference between incomplete or denied application doesn't mean uh, no difference to what the applicant would do next. There's not, you know, if someone's incomplete, then they could refile quickly, or the other one has to be refiling later. I, I just wanna make sure of that.
I, I think that's the case, I think they can refile, um,
Okay.
addressing your concerns, that's certainly what the statute talks about, so long as you give them the direction you're obligated to give them.
Oh, yeah.
Under the statute and regulations, which it sounds like you're prepared to do.
Does anybody else remember what that, that, oh, what the interviewer said in that thing about the, um, the incomplete application?
Yes.
Okay.
He said you have to reject it because it's not complete.
Okay, that's it, okay.
Yeah.
I would basically.
Alright, so. The, uh, this is intervener. Oh, well. Um, alright, so, um, looking at the new motion that was given to us, um, in section C, um, it says, we, uh, the last sentence further we fi- um, find the allegation, the pollutants discharged downstream of Hop Brook will adversely pollute this water course. I'm not so sure that, I don't feel that strongly about, that it will be polluting, I mean, the salt, yes. And I guess if we went, if we said the salt specifically.
The, the language as written here is absolute.
True.
And, and I don't think that's the case. I don't, I'd like, like, we could still find for this, but I, you, you know, that there's, it's not that, that pollutes the discharge, we find that the allegation that pollutants discharge downstream will adversely pollute the water cars. That's, that's not the finding, is that they haven't addressed that it won't. They haven't shown that it won't.
Although, according to state standards, they've done what they need to do to minimize pollutants. The, the only one they can't is with the, uh,
So we find that there's a great possibility that pollutants could be discharged downstream.
Good.
Yeah.
Right, we don't make it, we know this.
Yeah, not so, yeah.
There are evidence to improve one way.
Or the refined.
Yes, it was somewhat ambiguous.
Most of the pollutants are in the first inch of rainfall. They, you know, they have the sediment four bays, they have the, they have the separators, it's all standard practice. And the, uh, you know, there is vegetation in the bottom, things that might pick up some of the nitrogen phosphorus, but it's just the salt is the, yeah. Yeah.
I, I, I'm thinking that instead of focusing on this, we should make a list of the things that would go into the support letter of this, because we have to document all the things that would have to change, in a general sense. And then, and then that can be s- echoed into a revised one of these things, so they all have to be in there.
As a, as a, as a addendum to, or addition to part D, right?
Mm-hmm.
Do we do that tonight, or, or, yeah, with, with the most?
You should do it tonight.
Okay.
I think, well, I'll just start, I think the hydrological analysis
Yeah, yeah.
Um, has
On we- on wetlands, on
But, uh, in the, on the whole site, this is, and this is part of their drainage report.
Yeah.
It talks about four points, and only one of them is direct, is impacted by this. The rest are pretty much irrelevant. I mean, they're talking about the golf course and stuff on Great Pond.
I think our comments have been relevant.
Relevant, hydrological analysis, hydrologic analysis.
Post, post, um,
And, and including long, long-term expectations maybe, or effects? They didn't talk about anything. It's been talking more, long-term, what, like, like long-term expectations for, like they gave us like what it is now.
Mm-hmm.
They gave us what it's gonna, what the impact is gonna be during construction.
Mm-hmm.
And then we didn't get anything like post-construction.
Well, that was, that was buried in here, but it wasn't, again, it's talking about point A.
Especially on the wetland.
It's very gray and irrelevant.
Exactly. They talk about the det- the one of the detention basins, but all they talked about was the volume. They said, the water's gonna go in, but the elevation of the berm is two hundred and seventy-four feet above sea level, and the highest it's gonna get is two hundred and seventy-two, so it'll never spill over, and, and never overtop. But they didn't really say anything about, well, what's it gonna do? And that would, again, the only point that the hyd- on the hydrologic analysis was on Hop Brook. Anything else?
And the, and the area.
An irrelevant, an irrelevant area.
Yeah.
And, and, and the thing I was gonna add is, is, and it's one of the issues that fundamentally we have from a, an engineering science perspective, is a lot of the initial analysis was done, is done in, as the site as is without the trees, but they're gonna re-level it. And, and so, an idea of how that affects the underlying hy- hydrologic analysis has been done now, which is before all that's happened.
It'll increase the, yeah.
Right, right, but we just, we haven't heard that as, as a piece, so that's, you know, the
Grading of the property is gonna change the way the water flows.
Right, and, and so how, you know, how is it that they're gonna address, you know, what are the prudent alternatives for that?
What is not gonna work.
How is it they're, they're gonna, you know, they're gonna, um, evaluate that during their, um, during, during the phasing of this whole project? There are, there are ways, there, there, there are, I believe, ways in which you could change the order of things that are being done in the same footprint and get a better handle on how big an effect that is.
Here, I wrote this down.
Well, they are, they are using the, you know, standard, you know, watershed models.
A more comprehensive and relevant hydrologic study, including post-project water quality expectations and water flow expectations, including its relation to the new grades.
Green.
New grading. Talking in
Do we have, do we have, especially for, you know, um, hydrological, um, flow in the wetlands? Specific, you're talking, or not only the shop drug.
With the, the relevant
Including but not limited to
Post, it could be, but not limited to, yeah, we don't wanna limit ourselves, yeah.
No.
Cause we haven't talked about wetland seven.
No.
It's smaller, but it's gonna have the same issue, it's all gonna be, nothing's gonna get in it.
And wetland index. Just, and wetland.
Um, There's something in the other one. I'd like to get some LED, LID, um, something about swales.
Mm-hmm.
You know, info, other ways of infiltrating besides a pipe.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, so it, I, I, I think, I think it goes down, I think it goes down to other alternatives.
Okay, it does.
Control.
You know, we, we'd like to see other alternatives for these things to increase the, the, the water.
Low-impact development, strong water management.
And having limited to, and, you know.
Yes.
A yard drain.
Including, but not limited to.
That, that, that should be in everything.
Yes. Including and site reconfiguration.
Yeah, that's in the D two. The applicant right here, applicant focused on the, but did not expand to the commission's, like, consideration of alternative layouts.
That's it, good, good.
Which produce grading impacts.
Couldn't even matter which one.
Yeah.
And, and, I would say, alter- alternative layouts that would reduce grading impacts and the timing of the tree cut.
Staging, yeah.
Yeah, staging, I mean, we, we
The phasing of the
The, the, the phasing of phase two. It's mostly phase two. And, and, and logistically, you're talking about putting in fifty-two pads, which you can't actually build all at once. Uh, so, they hadn't really
Phase two, is that everything east, on the eastern side of the
Everything on the other side of, of the crossings.
And that they would consider not doing phase two?
Well, we talked about, I, no, cause they, we talked about that very early on, but the answer was no, but
It was this or not.
And, 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 and I, I still think that, well, you know, that there's some timing reasons as to why they might do just phase one in the beginning or whatever, but, but there are lots, they did never, they did not address other alternatives for how to phase in phase two.
Yes.
Minimizing the impact. So
We should, um, sorry, just spring, springboarding off of you right now. Once construction would, would begin, we can request that they continuously monitor.
But, and, and
Or maybe have somebody on site that's monitoring and observing the changes.
I, I, I think they did a good job at saying during construction
Yeah.
they will, and, and there was a big improvement, you know, on, on the, on the construction system,
Yeah, yeah.
to make sure that that went as planned.
Right, okay.
But the engineering for that does not handle the hydrology. Only thing that will handle the hydrology and get reducing the risk is some way which you do a piece of this at a smaller size, which is traditional, like five acres.
Yeah, okay.
And then you see how that, how your assumptions worked over a time period. Um, and that, and that
So more, more phasing over a longer period.
Right, and that, and, and that would still allow, starting of the process, construction, you know, um, uh, moving forward on sort of phase one, but it would, it would, it would help alleviate whether there's an issue or not. And, 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 and that was never addressed, so it may be that that can't work, but we never had the evidence that that was addressed. Therefore, we have a hard time saying, I think, to the broader community that all alternatives have been considered and discussed.
Yeah, I think when we talked about prudent feasible alternatives, really, that this was the only feasible site. It wasn't the only feasible configuration on the site.
Right.
Correct, this was the only, for, yeah, when I remember, SLR said this was it. This is the only place we can build fifty-two units.
Right, which is why they did not put a creative alternative.
But, but, but
Location.
Correct.
Right. Would, and, and I'm, and, and they, we did, we did discuss that a little bit. You know, they looked at the other places, and there wasn't one to do that. But, again, from my perspective, they haven't come through and say that the way that they were gonna execute on this plan was the only way, they said this is the way we're gonna do it, there wasn't a discussion about how to, how to do any phasing on phase two. There was discussion how to improve the construction techniques, which they've done, you know, way better than it was in the beginning. But we haven't really talked about the other pieces, or like an alternative housing configuration or something that would, that would do something.
That was our, that was that.
Right. I, I do think in, also on, on the end of this thing, there's a list of sort of what I'll call secondary items that you guys keep sort of bringing up, which is, you know, the lawn man is the pestis- the pests, the integrated pest management, the salt. All those things would still apply to any rework system that wasn't really addressed. So they need, that, you know, that just needs to be addressed, I think it can be.
Yeah, it was like, we're gonna use best management practices for pests. What does that mean?
Right.
Right, so it, it
You come out every two weeks, every month, we use, we use dioxin and kill everything.
No, that's not
So, so I, I
I'm exaggerating here, but, you know what I mean, you, you know, do we use
Yeah, I know, but that's, but, you know, they do have a plan, I mean, it's vague because it's constantly changing, but, um
Correct. Right. But, but we wanna make sure that what comes back before us is ready to go. But we owe that to the applicant. If they decide to come back, that, that they have everything out of this process.
They did submit that, they did submit their
Yeah, but there were always several questions on those, so those things, they should be resolved.
The main, main thing is configuration that would, would allow water to, you know, to flow into the wetlands.
Evaluation that there are no other alternatives that would allow it to flow, to flow closer to its original system.
That would not de-water the wetlands, yeah.
Yeah, right, and that they, and so they'd have to address that, that they've looked at fifteen other ways, and this is the only way to do it.
Well, there might be another way to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it might not be fifty-two units.
Yeah, mm-hmm, well, I, I, I think that's a reasonable, a reasonable request as well.
Alright, anything else?
So it's the, we have the, we have the basic hydrology, um, construction, we've, we're sort of, is, is okay. Um, it's the, and it's the, it's the more detailed analysis of prudent alternatives, and, um, do we have to, is there a wildlife discussion, a wildlife fauna discussion within the wetlands area?
Well, for the biological assessment, I mean, uh, I, the, the only biological assessment was for the faculate, I mean, the obligate species. There was nothing, there was nothing about the faculative, because there, there are a lot of creatures, upland creatures that use wetlands, but we don't know what they are because there was no discussion of any of the upland bio- biology, which is, I think, pretty standard when you have a site, you talk about what else is on the site. Um, and that was completely missing, so, um, it has to be for the upland areas as well as the wetland areas.
Especially as, uh, site of this size.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Some type of a comprehensive environmental assessment, including
For the site, or a biological assessment of the site.
Biological assessment of the project site.
Of, 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 actually, the area.
The entire, the entire site.
Yeah, of, construction site going down to the river.
Just the construction site. Oh, yeah, yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah, y- yes.
Well, actually, the whole site, because some of it's
The entire site, it will be affected, yeah.
The entire site, yeah.
Yeah, the other, the untouched metal will be affected, because there's less space for critters to be in.
Yeah.
Well, just to know what's there, I know, I know, we did, we had some testimony that there was a wetland wave today, so
But, but
Woodcock, thank you, Woodcock.
But that, but that's an interesting question, because outside the area, outside the wetlands and the part that goes to the river, that's outside of our jurisdiction, that would fall under the conservation commission.
Yes, but, and what I'm saying is that there are a faculative, um, species that use wetlands, so that it is in our jurisdiction.
So if you, you take away the wetlands, it would harm these, these animals because there's no more wetland.
Right.
They don't use it all the time, but maybe they use for drinking, whatever, anything.
There might be creatures there that are there all the time, but we don't know.
We don't know.
We don't know, anything, yeah, we don't know.
We, we don't know any, any except what the interveners have told us, so, um, beyond, uh, beyond, uh
Okay, so, but, but, but that's, that's the next one, which is like a
Comprehensive biological assessment of the site.
Comprehensive
But, but the site.
Comprehensive biological assessment of the entire site area, I'm just writing this down here, thank you.
I actually think that, that and the prudent alternatives, um, including, you know, timing on the construction, et cetera, that covers almost all the major areas. If they came back with those things, addressed as to, we thought about X, Y, and Z, and here's why these are good, or these are bad, or here's a change we, we could make, that would, that would satisfy most of the needs.
It's really like a handful of checkboxes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't need it.
Mm-hmm.
But it's, it's, it'd be interesting to see how they could take this site and get the water into, what I'm saying, concurrent configuration.
Exactly.
Anyway, um, anything else? Are you there?
I'm trying to think, cause, wh- once we
I know.
Once we
Yep.
I, I don't wanna drag this out, but I'm almost like, we should send this back, get a draft motion written I, I don't wanna drag this out, but I'm almost like, we should send this back, get a draft motion written up, and then, and then, this is where we're headed, and vote on it next time.
We, we don't have a next.
We don't have a next time.
I don't have a next time?
Yeah, this is it.
This is, well, okay.
This is it, because of time.
Well, well, to be clear, the, I mean, the, the, June eleventh is the deadline, but, but I will tell you that when we sent out the
June eleventh.
kind of role to, to find a quorum for dates. This was the, this was the most, this will be the most attended meeting.
And I think we have what we have, I think Sue's been taking good notes. And, and Brittany, did you get any, Brittany's on, so I think we can, we have the gist.
George, can we put it on the script, the motion?
Well, it sounds like they moved off of this particular motion, using this motion.
Well, using a lot of this, this is, a lot of this is fine, I think you just wanna add to what.
I don't know what you're doing.
Yeah.
Well, some of the language on this has to change.
So I think what you ought to do is, you, you, you ought to read a motion and add the things that, that you wanna add to it.
Yeah, that's what we do with regulations.
That's what I would recommend.
Are we gonna, we have to change this a little bit?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, you have to change the language.
Read this and add this.
All right, so let's start with the, let's start, I'll just read it out. Um, move the conservation commission in the wetlands water course denies the application. C C number twenty-five dash O two of McLean's affiliates, Inc., applicant owner for a wetland permit to construct fifty-two new residential units as existing McLean retirement community with associated improvements in wetland soils and upland review area at seventy-five Great Pond Road. Assess a map E zero eight, block one four seven, lot zero zero one A. After consideration of the intervenor's SIBA petition, the allegation of unreasonable pollution, impairment, or destruction of the ways of, uh, wetlands based on evidence of the record has not been proven. The intervenant's experts raised a number of speculative concern without meeting a substantive, why am I anyway, yeah, evidence test. Not B, notwithstanding the above, the Simsbury Conservation Commission inland wetlands and water course agency has also considered the criteria for decision found in section ten point two of the town inland wetlands and water course regulations, and find that based upon the testimony on the record and the applicant's submission, the project does not meet the standards for approval and will adversely impact the wetlands and water courses. In addition, the submission of the required biological su- assessment was unsatisfactory and failed to meet the submission standard seven point six point D.
Hold, hold on a second, so in, in B, it's, on the, on the third line from the bottom, you said the approval and will adversely impact? I said, and I would change that to and could adversely impact.
Or likely?
Or likely.
Or likely?
Likely is better.
Likely, okay.
Say it again, will likely?
Will likely adverse impact, adversely impact the wetlands, and just add the word likely.
Yeah.
If the wa- if the water isn't going there the way it was before, it will, um, but that's fine. So in addition to submit, and so we got to that, um, C, specifically, we find the project will irrevocably, irrevocably harm the hydrology of wetlands number eight by changing infiltration and runoff characteristics.
And that should be will likely as well, maybe?
You, will, will likely harm, not irrevocably.
Will likely irrevocably, yeah. We can't, I don't think we can say will, because we don't have that data that firmly shows yes or no, right?
Okay, yeah.
Because this would back up our reason for asking for more information.
Good point. Yes, all right.
What tangents meet there?
Will likely.
Will likely.
Will likely.
Yeah.
I agree.
By changing infiltration runoff characteristics based on expert testimony supported by substantial expert res- evidence on record, and, and it's really the design. And the plan as it is.
Well, that's part of the, that's part of the expert evidence.
Expert witness, okay. Um, further, we find that, uh, pollutants, in particular salt, shall we say that? Discharge downstream of Hoprock will adversely pollute this water course.
Will likely.
Will likely.
So we do will likely again, that's funny.
Yeah. So you, the pollutants including salt.
Including salt.
But not limited to, but not, but not limited to salt.
Okay. Including but not limited to.
Salt.
All right.
So.
D, the commission has considered section ten point two point B related to feasible prudent alternatives, finds that there are other potential feasible and prudent alternatives make, which may have, can we say, well, alternatives and design, which might have less impact on the wetlands and water course. The applicant focused their reasonable and prudent discussion on engineering alternatives to crossing, but did not expand to the commission's satisfaction, consideration of alternative layouts which would have reduced grading impacts on wetlands number eight, um. Just the grading impact.
Flow of water.
Well, that goes to the hydrology.
Well, I think that's our, that's our request, or there, our suggestion, is that they do hydrology as relates to grading.
Okay, okay. Plustering of units which would, could reduce the need for two crossings or alternative housing types, which would reduce the overall footprint of the project. And then, and yours.
Okay, and so these are the, these are our alternatives, or our, our, um, what is this part called, our, our rec- our requests? Our findings. Our findings?
Yep.
Okay, so the first one I have written down is, uh, a, a, I put it like G P more, because I don't know if it's.
Types. Types of alternatives.
More or not, comprehensive and relevant hydrologic, hydrologic study, including but not limited to post-project water quality and flow expectations within the wetland project area and related impacts on the relevant site area um, with regards to the project grading. How's that sound?
Wordy.
Say it again. Okay, a more comprehensive and relevant hydrologic study, including but not limited to post-project water quality and flow expectations within the wetland and project area and related impacts on the relevant site area with regards to the project grading.
Well, I, I, I think, I think what was lost in that is, is that we wanted this done in, you know, post, you know, project grading assessments, right?
Pre, post.
You know, and, and we can say both.
Existing conditions and post constru-
And post, and, and post. Yeah, that's, that's a better way to say it.
I'm using their, their, their.
Okay. Okay.
Pre-existing and then.
Post-construction. Yeah, post-construction on the hydrology.
Do we have to restate that, or? We got it, do I need to say it again?
Yeah, I would read it again if you changed anything.
Brittany, do you have? Okay.
Based on Charles, read it again.
Post, what is it?
Pre-existing.
Pre-existing, just existing.
Okay.
Or exist, existing, existing conditions and post-construction conditions.
Yeah, so. Okay, so just scratch most of that then, and just say, a comprehensive and relevant hydrologic study. Maybe we, but not limited to.
I think you could just say hydrological study, of the existing and the post.
I think the, I think.
Of existing project and post-project.
Hydrologic.
I think, I think the, the, well, we had it in there, the relevant, because they didn't.
Now. Yeah, relevant, more comprehensive and relevant hydro, relevant.
Yeah.
Hydrologic stu- study, including but not limited to existing and post-project.
No, I think we need the, including and not.
We don't need the not limited.
Limited, no.
Yeah.
This is good, this is why my emails are so long, you guys have to come back to work with me. Uh, okay, more comprehensive and relevant hydrologic study, including existing and post-project water quality and flow expectations within the project area. Period?
Yeah, period.
I didn't say anything about grading in that, though.
But you said post, post-project, so that's, so that's, that's included in, in the.
Okay. Perfect.
In the post-project.
That's way shorter than what I wrote, okay, the next one, it's much shorter, don't worry. Um, alternative methods, including but not limited to less impactful erosion control measures that we had talked about, I didn't write all of them down, you were talking about.
Oh, oh, they're, um, not erosion control measures, they're, um, um. Solution of low-impact design.
Low.
Development.
Development, low-impact development.
Okay. Development designs?
And stormwater management plan.
Mm-hmm. In the storm, in the stormwater management plan.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, lesson, okay, low impact, yeah. Alternative methods, including but not limited to low-impact development, design. Design, I'm writing this at the same time, in the manage, in.
Within the stormwater.
Within the stormwater.
Stormwater management plan.
Within the stormwater management plan, okay. The next one I have is, um, more phases and reduction of project sizes for each phase, and extension of the project over a longer period of time. This isn't exactly what we said.
No.
It would be, um.
An evaluation.
Evaluation.
Of the impact of changing, um, the, the timeline of construction, then, and then, and then I think you put the other ones in that you had, so.
Would it be easier just simply to say revised construction phasing plan?
Yes.
A revised construction phasing plan, should we guide them any further than that, or just, I.
Yeah.
That.
With consid- with consideration for sub-phases?
I think. Considered.
That results in lower in, lower potential impact, uh, always related to impact.
Yes, oh, I like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Revised construction phasing plan.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
To.
Result in.
That would result in, in.
Lower adverse.
Or impact or?
Adverse, lower adverse impacts.
Or.
Or the ability to monitor any potential.
Well, they do have that in there, but.
Right.
No, I mean, like when they do phase, say, phase one, section one, or subsection one, they do that, and then.
They do have, they do.
We complicate that.
Yeah, no, they do have that in there.
Okay, to the applicant to show that.
Yeah.
Revised construction phasing plan, that would result in lower adverse impacts.
Yeah, I.
Um, I wrote down updated integr- integrated pest management plan.
And, and, uh, and maintenance, that's where the salt comes in.
And.
More specific, like, uh, more detailed, other than.
Comprehensive?
Comprehensive, right, yes.
I like that word. Updated. And comprehensive?
Just, just comprehensive.
Okay, updated, a comprehensive, integrated man- pest management plan.
But then there's also, there was also a question about, um, other methods to treat the, the water. Wow, you're talking about rain gardens, et cetera, and, and, and I don't remember there ever being a real evaluation of that.
No, no.
There wasn't, there was this, we can't do it, we don't want to.
Well, the, the, you said we can't do that, and the applicant put in your, your news, but, um, that would be under the L I D.
Right.
Low-impact development.
Okay.
Okay, and the last one I have is a comprehensive biological assessment of the entire site area.
Yep.
Wh- where does the thing, like the salt, the, the salt, um, erode rate treatment or things?
That would be in the water quality.
That, that was up, that was up here.
Okay. Just to make sure it was someplace.
I'm right. I think that's.
So, do we?
So you, so you've read that as a motion, so, so, it's a tagged motion.
Yeah, that's a motion.
So. Would anyone like to put it?
But, so you would need a second.
Can I make the more, all right.
Absolutely, chairman can always make a motion.
All right, all right. All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? Seconded?
Jason.
So, so where are we at this right now, we've, have we, have we read the?
We've read the motion.
Yes, read the motion and, and our.
We've read the motion.
We have to mention, we have it, we have it, um, um, edited, so we're ready to take the vote, are you ready?
It's in motion, yes.
Yeah, I can, yeah, I mean, it's, 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 it's got, it's gotta have almost all the major pieces, and there's nothing really that's not that clear to it.
Yeah. No, I think we've done it, all right, so all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? All right. All right. Thank you, everyone, for your participation in this project.
We've worked too.
We still have, we still have.
We still have, we still have meeting, so, um, do we have any, um, additional business, if we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, all right, thank you.[1718.81]